Those of you that are watching on television. At this time, we want to welcome a couple of 4th grade students, Jordan Hawley and Antonia Wyatt, who will be leading us in our pledge, followed then by our moment of silence.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where Richard stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. Thank you. Ladies, thank you very much. Don't leave, stick around a while, we'd be glad to have you stay awhile.
I've had my work.
You did a wonderful job, thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Thanks for letting me get position.
You have the agenda in front of you, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Renee Rasek.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, and there is none. All right, Dr. Gilbert, communications?
Yes, several communications. The Tennessee Council for Exceptional Children has accepted the proposal simplifying learning to unleash student potential for elementary students in a K-6 district for the 2015 Tennessee CEC Fall Conference at Vanderbilt, so we congratulate the Special Ed Department. Hobgood's DeeDee Potter, who was our teacher there, recently had two Hobgood art classes working with visiting Brooklyn, New York artist Timothy Lee. Mr. Lee is first place winner of The Journey, which is an exhibition of artwork by an elite group of young emerging artists with disabilities. The John F. Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts provided an art lesson plan and covered the cost of all materials required to implement with the children at Hobgood Library, so we congratulate them. The state has awarded Murfreesboro City Schools a grant again this year for the Family Resource Center, this year is in the amount of $29,611.65. This is a continuation of our Family Resource Center program, so I thank Greg Lyles for that grant, and also I think Lisa worked with him on that. The General Mills Foundation, on behalf of the Murfreesboro Community Action Council, has awarded MCS and Coordinated School Health $10,000 for the Bike for Life program, and at this time, I'm going to ask Lisa, she'll come up and talk a little bit about that program, please.
The Bike for Life program is a grant from General Mills. General Mills has been very supportive of several programs for Murfreesboro City Schools. This particular grant is directed to Casen Lane Academy and Scales. We've worked with Lee, Mr. Wilkerson, and Ms. Johnson at both of those schools to determine what was needed, and Bike for Life is a great way to teach curriculum, bike curriculum, as well as safety, as well as getting our children moving. These particular schools have a lot of bikers to their schools, a large community of bikers, so it's really going to be a year-long process that teaches bike safety, as well as working with Murfreesboro Police Department, Parks and Rec, to get our families involved and get them moving. So, we're happy to have it. We're going to start at Casen Lane and then evolve onto Scales, and maybe if we get more grants throughout the system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Any questions or comments? Ms. Phillips, and Ms. Smith?
It sounds like such a great program, and you're right, they have been wonderful partners from Murfreesboro City Schools. I see, you know, I have a little bit of a concern, my concern is that, I worry about the children who don't have bikes, who are somehow left out of this organization's program because they don't have bikes, and I think, what can we do to make sure that every kid has a bike that's part of this program?
I'm sorry, part of the grant does provide bikes. We will actually have bikes and helmets at the schools. Sorry, that was an important piece of the puzzle that I left out.
Good, I see, see, I'm so glad you're on it.
I apologize, the program and the actual grant is in your packet, so there are, there will be bikes at both schools.
Okay, great.
As well as helmets, and small bikes, as well as tall bikes, so 3rd through 6th graders.
Excellent, thank you.
There, there, we're, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Smith, and I'll ask my question.
Oh, thank, and I know that there's something in the packet, and I appreciate that. Can you tell us again how that will, how it will work, like who will be in charge of the program through the schools?
It actually comes under the Coordinated School Health, and they'll work with the physical education teachers, as well as the principals, so part of it will be part of the physical education program, but it's afterwards. We'll also work with our ESP program, so that there is incorporating, again, that bike safety, learning bike signals, it, so it's pretty much, it's, it's pretty much going to be different by the season, so sometimes it will be the children riding around on a parking lot outside, without cars, obviously, and then some parts of it will be on Saturdays, where we actually bring the families in, for the entire family to have bike safety programs.
So, will they incorporate it into the PE curriculum?
I'm looking to Mr. Wilkerson for that. I don't think that's the intention, I think it is the intention for it to be additional, like after-school programs, or maybe half-day programs, so we'll work with the ESP, as well as the physical education teachers, to make sure it's there.
Well, great, I would love to see when it, is it put in place, I'd love to go see how the children are doing.
Absolutely, absolutely. Casen Lane will be doing the majority of the implementation, and again, now that we have the grant, it'll be a lot easier to go, okay, here it is, now let's make it work for the school.
Right, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, according to what we have, the information, there will be 50 bicycles and 50 helmets provided through the grant, and as well as then encouraging those students who ride their bicycles to school to continue to do so as well, and then they too can be incorporated into the program as taking an active part, so to speak.
Right, right, especially on those Saturday programs, they may want to bring their own bike, but we'll have bikes there for people who don't have a bike. Again, Casen Lane has a lot of bike riders that come to school because they have the sidewalks all the way from many of their neighborhoods, so it'll be all-encompassing, and the program will be a wonderful program. I'm sorry that I don't have all the answers for you on it, but it, we will work directly with the principals and the physical education teachers, and Coordinated School Health will be the one who actually oversees the project.
So, this will be primarily at Casen Lane for the first year, and then we hope to expand it to other schools in years to come?
It will begin, it will begin at Casen Lane and Scales. It'll roll out at Casen Lane, but Scales will be right behind it, so the grant was written for those two primary schools, and as we go around the city, if there, you know, other schools will probably hold up their hand and say, let's try it at our school as well.
How long does it take to go through this curriculum?
It'll be part of about a four-to-five month program.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a long curriculum, it truly is a bike safety in the school's curriculum. You know, they'll go from everywhere, how do you park your bike at a school, how do you ride to school, whether the hand signals, where do you see the crossing guards at your school, so those will be specific to each school site.
And as it is included in, it says here cardiovascular, nutritional health, that sort of thing, so we're getting more than just riding a bicycle?
Right.
Okay.
But again, riding a bicycle is one of the basic healthy lifestyles that a child can take on, so, yes, but there will be curriculum, and that will be part of the physical education department at each school, we'll have that curriculum that goes with it.
Okay. Ms. Phillips?
Somehow I've missed, did you say part of the Saturday programs?
There will be a couple of Saturday programs where we'll invite families to come.
Okay.
It's not, and nothing is mandatory on Saturdays ever, but it will be a family-type oriented, and I know that Mr. Wilkerson, as well as Ms. Johnson, they do family events on a regular basis, so this will be one of their family events, where we invite the 3rd through 6th grade families to come together for this bike safety program.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Trail, very good, very good, sound like a wonderful program.
In September, Shannon Minner, who is the Reese Rogers Librarian, will be joining Lineball Libraries, Rita Shacklet, they will be presenting to the Buffalo River Library Directors, and then in addition, they will be presenting at the Tennessee Library Association. As you know, we have a tremendous partnership with Lineball, and these two ladies presented last year in Nashville, and they have been asked to present again, so the sharing that goes on between Lineball and Murfreesboro City certainly has been noted. Billy Joe Thompson received a grant last year, she has received a grant this year from the Tennessee STEM Innovation Network and TBA. This will be for a mobile weather station and instruments, as well as supplemental materials for their STEM lab, and Leah Barch and Cherry Ross have been selected for the Tennessee STEM Innovation Leaders Institute, this is a year-long training and mentoring experience that will give them the opportunity to network with other districts, and we received word today that Bradley will be hosting, in collaboration with Patterson Park, this next summer, they will be hosting the Arts, Tennessee Arts Commission's Create Conference, so that will be an exciting time for Bradley, so Bradley's going to have a busy year. Finally, last but not least, and certainly not least, in the lives of the safety of our children, I'd like to ask, please, for Mr. Mike McCoy from Publix, if he would come to the podium, please, and Mr. Campbell, if you'd join me. As you all know, a couple of weeks ago, we had some excitement in our system, and what we learned even before the event was over, was how helpful the Publix store had been to our children and to our staff. The children were evacuated there, and they took care of the children, they read to the children, they calmed them, and so I really appreciate that, and so on behalf of the board and the school system, I'm going to let you present this, Mr. Campbell, if you would, to Ms. McCoy.
Mike, thank you very much for your support and your help. I'm good, be glad to be partnered with you, the things you have done for our children, not only on that Friday, but other times as well.
Oh, thank you, we appreciate it, we're glad to be neighbors.
Thank you very much.
We heard from several staff how helpful Publix had been, so I really think that any recognition we can give them is certainly well-deserved, and those are your communications.
Okay, well, I think we need to not only commend Publix, but also all of our teachers and our staff, and everybody that was involved in the event on that Friday, because it was certainly not something that we scheduled, it was an exciting day, I'm sure, for a lot of students, exciting for teachers as things changed around, but everywhere I went and looked, everything seemed to be well under control, and they were, they were doing very well, and got back to Black Fox about 12:00 or 12:30, am I right?
That's right.
Okay, so very good, thanks to everybody that has a hand in providing safety for our students, and also our staff as well. All right, you have in front of you a list of consent items, do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, have a second, Mr. Barrett, thank you very much. Any question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, and there is none. All right, action items.
Mr. Anderson.
Just thank you, Dr. Gilbert, good evening, board. This evening, there are two action items, they are both year-end housekeeping budget amendments. As I mentioned to you at your last meeting, we did receive some additional revenue from the state of Tennessee for our BEP, Basic Education Program Growth Funds. The $709,500 is the difference in what we had anticipated versus what we actually received, so we had to put this into the budget to get it, to get the funds in there. The next page is the expenditures that would offset some of that amount, and they, like I said, these are just housekeeping items, we cannot spend more than is budgeted, so we have to adjust the budget at the end to make sure that we have the right amount of funds allocated in the expenditure column, so we can spend those funds. So, the first, the first amendment is for the general purpose budget amendment, and as I said, it's to allocate the additional growth monies that we received, and then the expenditures that kind of matched up with that.
All right, do we have a motion to approve these budget amendments?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Renee, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, are there any questions?
Would you, I do.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Phillips?
Would you review for the public watching at home, how these are going to be allocated, these additional funds?
Sure, these funds, the $709,000 that we got additional money was because we had had to hire over 20 teachers for the additional growth that we had last year, so the, basically the funds we received from the state of Tennessee for growth was about a million and a half dollars that went to fund those, and other operating expenses, and dealing with additional students, textbooks, materials, et cetera. We also had, and one of the items on here is technology, we had to purchase additional computers for the additional students we had, and by doing that, we had to allocate additional funds for that as well, so those are covered into this expense too.
We have done a lot of talking about our fund balance, were we able to address that at all?
Yes, in fact, when we go over later in the meeting, I will show you the year-end budgets and year-end fiscal statement, and you'll see that rather than having to eat into our fund balance, we were able to actually contribute a little bit because of the growth monies.
That's what I wanted to celebrate, thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Anderson, then, under the administrative support, the $10,800 and the $28,000, where does that go, and how is that distributed?
The administrative support area, the $10,800, let's see, this is, this is for Coaching Academy, and for tuition for Academy classes, went in to fund that, so we had additional funds to pay for those, but it's put into the Director's Budget Line item, and she had received some grants to offset some of that, but that's the difference between it all.
Okay, and the Office of Principal, administrative support, same thing?
Let's see, Office of the Principal is other salaries and wages for the EA Office, and the Attendance Office, and Communications for those departments.
Okay, okay, thank you. Ms. Smith?
I guess I don't understand exactly, I mean, I understand that we got money because of growth, but before the growth, we went through the full budget and scrutinized every detail of it, and then, but these details, we did, we never did focus on, were they ever brought before us?
When we make the budget, we make the budget, as you know, over a year in advance, and we do estimates on the expenditures that we're going to have. We do not budget for growth dollars, because we have no idea if we're going to get them or not, because of the way the state determines growth dollars, so when we do that, we end up showing a deficit with a full expectation that we should get something if we grow as much as we want. The individual items, like I said, are estimates on what we would spend, but we didn't know we were going to end up buying all those extra computers for all those students, we didn't know that we're going to need extra training to go into that, we didn't know that we're going to have to have extra expenditures on textbooks, so they do fall through the budget code as we go.
Basically, we have to spend, the growth money has to be spent on last year, correct?
Yes, it does, it has to be spent on last year, and it has to be things that, we had to get those things, and we don't get growth money till after the fact, so we have to spend local dollars to do that, and once we do, then when the growth money comes in, and again, we don't know how much it's going to be, when it does come in, we can offset those expenditures with that.
Okay, so, I am correct in what I'm saying, right, that we didn't really approve where these, these dollars would be spent?
What you, what, you approved what categories we spend the monies in, you didn't approve the individual items, and that's why we do a housekeeping at the end of the year, to get any things that we may have gone over the budget on, because we can't spend more than what was allocated. So, if you're asking me specifically, did we say to buy computers? No, but your, your setup for the computers is one computer for every two students, so we go and buy those computers, and then we come back to you after we do that, knowing that, you know, we had to fund those.
I see, I have a little bit of difficulty with it, because the, because of the limited role that the board has, and only that way that we can affect the policy is through the budget, and how we help our schoolchildren, so, that's my, but I do understand that we did set the policy that we want, I mean, you're carrying it through the way we'd want to, but it could be taken, if you had wanted to go a different direction, then it looks like it could have, on these growth dollars.
Mike, I guess we could, but we're following the board's direction.
Perfect, okay.
And doing what we need to do to keep the operation the way you, we feel you intended us to keep it.
Good, thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
You know, I think those are all good questions and points, because it can be very confusing, especially when you know that, you know, you can't spend over what you've budgeted, and the money's coming late, and how do you follow, you know, how do you, you dovetail that with board policy, and administrative directives, it can be very challenging, confusing, you know, even if you're on the board, to understand, let alone the folks at home watching these meetings, so I appreciate you answering our questions.
Sure.
All right, any other questions on that? We need a motion to approve these budget amendments?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
I have a question. Is it too late?
We have voted, but you still have.
I didn't vote, but is the ESP, are these amendments included in what we're voting on right now?
No, just the general purpose one is what you voted on, the ESP is what I have to go over next.
Okay.
Okay.
So, aye.
Okay. Now, extended ESP budget, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, the extended school program is under the same guidelines that we have to have the money budgeted before we can actually spend it, and in this case, because the program grew, overall, creek opened up, we got more students than we had anticipated, we needed more salaries to meet the state ratios, and when you have salaries, you have social security, medical insurance, dental insurance, employer Medicare, and other fringe benefits, all fit into that, when we offer additional programs, it comes out of other contracted services, and then equipment and other charges are other items that we would use to support the program overall. All of these were additional expenditures to the program, and it comes out of the fund balance that's in the ESP program, and the fund balance for ESP was at the time that we started this, over a million dollars, so we were in good shape to make these moves and provide these services for our children in that program.
Okay.
So, I have just one question. We basically approved their budget, but it does not affect the operating budget of Murfreesboro City Schools, this is separate.
That is correct, the ESP budget and the school nutrition budget do not impact your general purpose operating budget to run the basic education of the schools.
Yes, that's what I'm getting to, so that means ESP is self-supporting.
ESP and school nutrition are self-supporting budgets, that is correct.
Thank you.
Now, do we have a motion to approve the amendments for the extended school program?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right, we've had questions, any other questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Reports and information?
Under reports and information, our first report is the City Schools Foundation.
It's me again, my apologies, Doug Young is our chair, and he had another meeting come up unexpectedly, so I'm going to give his report for him, and again, the City Schools Foundation does an annual report, it's part of our bylaws to the school board, we have, we have, we have 14 members on our foundation, these members serve three-year terms, members can serve consecutively two three-year terms, so they could be on our foundation board for six years, they can roll off a year, and then come back on, and that's exactly what Doug did, he was on for six years, rolled off a year, and then came back on as a board member again. In addition to our trustees, we also have Dr. Gilbert and Jared, who serves from the school, and from the board, as a board liaison. This year, we've added two new members to our foundation, Ms. Brooke LaRoche, and then Ms. Siobhan Davis Lewis. For 2014-15 school year, our fashion show netted $6,000, our excellence in education netted $58,000, we gave $50,000 in teacher grants, and $18,500 in parity grants to our schools. The teacher grant dollars funded about 36 grants, of course, these are funded anonymously, so as we vote, we don't know where, which school, or which teacher, or which grade level is receiving the grant dollars, so it's always nice to look at it after it's over with, and say that all 12 schools did receive at least one grant. So, 36 grant applications were funded from 12 schools, that's where the $50,000 came from. The grants range in size, they range in what they're asking, from technology to math manipulatives. Last year, we gave $200 in one grant, and $6,000 in another, so the foundation does not limit the grant size, which is a nice thing for teachers, they can come together as maybe a 6th grade unit, and ask for one large grant. The parity dollars are spent at the principal's discretion, some principals use that for tutoring after school, some use for adding technology into their schools, others are using it for field trips, or whatever the need of their school is. The parity dollars are determined based on a formula of, pretty much, how much can, is your PTO raising, and how much is your need base, so that ratio, that was worked out years ago, as far as how to determine who gets parity grants. Last year, we did host a new teacher reception, we also are the conduit for the United Way Grant, it's a $15,000 grant that goes to our Franklin Heights Learning Resource Center, we, it's simply a run-through, as far as we accept it, and then we pay it right back to the school system. We honored Tommy and Jenny Bragg last year in February with our excellence in education, and we honored Mitchell Nielsen School. This year, we will be honoring Ed and Andrea Lowry, and Black Fox will be our school. We are constantly looking for new ways to grow and support Murfreesboro City Schools, the teachers and students, this is a fabulous board, they work well together, they are in it for the student and for the teacher, I'm very proud to service their liaison, it's amazing to see this group to come together monthly, we meet about seven times a year, and then we have our committee meetings as far as for excellence in education, and the fashion show, through, between the annual meetings, between the monthly meetings. We have a foundation website, citieschoolsfoundation.com, if you ever want to go and look for more details on it. Again, this year, Brooke LaRoche is chairing our fashion show, and that, you should have a flyer on your desk about it, it's coming up on October the 1st, and Ben Parsley is chairing our excellence in education gala. This is the 10th year for the City Schools Foundation, the charter was set in 2005, so it's pretty nice to have something that's been going for 10 years, and it seems to be rocking along pretty well. So, that is the report, if you have any questions, I will try to answer them. Good to go.
Ms. Phillips?
Mine is, first of all, Ms. Trail, thank you so very much for being so a part of the foundation, and all your work on it, but also, I want to give a shout-out to all the committee members who give so generously of their time to support Murfreesboro City Schools, and the teachers and children, families of Murfreesboro City Schools.
Absolutely, our group is a great group of people who come together and give their time, their energy, to raise dollars to support the classrooms.
Thank you, Ms. Trail, very good report.
Revenue and expenditure report, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gilbert, the revenue expenditure report, if we could just go to the last one of the year, the June report, that we gave you two in there, the May and June, the June report, it shows a net income for the year of $284,675. Last year, at this time, we were negative $581,908. So, as you can see, we, we came out better than we had anticipated, and a large part of that, of course, is the growth monies. On the next page, the revenue page, you see we had 102.6% of revenue that, that came in, which is obviously good, that was over what we had anticipated, and our expenditures on the following page are at 95.1, hence the difference in the revenue versus the expenditures. On the expenditure line number nine, 10, and 16 are the lines that you approved the budget amendments for, so we will switch those out, and make them at, not to exceed 100% of the budgeted amount. So, overall, we ended up with a very good year. So overall, we ended up with a very good year, and, and as again, the growth, we were, we were very fortunate that the growth came the way it did and, and that, and we were able to get the growth money to cover that growth, to handle it. So if any other questions on the year-end, that's, that's where we are right now, the auditors are working right now, auditing the books, on the school-based books and on the general purpose books, and you'll get your, get your report, I think it's, I think it's November is when your report comes out.
Mr. Barrett?
How are the new auditors working out so far?
They had a great meeting with our staff, the, the school bookkeepers came in, and they spent about four hours with them, and they really went over everything, they do see things differently than the previous audit team did, and so we're having to adjust how we operate internally with things, but so far, it's been very well received, it's just different procedures they want us to follow.
Of course, okay.
Any other questions on the audit report? I mean, the revenue, it is, isn't it, not audit? Okay. Dr. Gilbert?
I'm going to ask Mr. Ringstaff to come to the podium in case you have, this is probably, normally, we don't go into detail on personnel report, but because this personnel report does involve the new hires and placement of folks, if you have any questions, he is here tonight for that.
Since it's a time of year that the personnel report's a little lengthy, and we've also included the assignment list with this board report, first, we'll go over the personnel report, we hired 72 certified staff for this 2015, 2016 school year, 36 certified staff left us after this past year. We had, we have 393 classroom teachers, kindergarten through sixth grade right now. The budget that you approved in March or April had us 392, so we're right on target-
Wow.
...with a little bit of growth right there. We grew some, we had the, the budget include 16 additional teachers for growth, six coaches, we promoted two teachers to assistant principals, our special ed staff increased by about five or six, and our ESL increased by about four or five. That's, that's what accounts for the difference of the 72 and the 36 staff. Are there any questions on the personnel report? I'll go over the assignment list real quick, yes, Ms. Phillips?
Ms. Phillips?
Did you conduct excellent interviews with the 36 teachers that we lost?
Yes, ma'am, I believe we did, we sent it electronically.
And what was the primary determining factor?
Many of them left, their spouse was getting transferred to a different location, things like that, and sometimes they just want to stay home with their children.
Right, right, and I like that you conducted it electronically, it's easier-
Yes, ma'am, we do not go through the principal anymore.
Right, mhm, it's easier to be, sometimes more-
Yes, ma'am, more honest.
Ms. Smith?
Can you tell us a little bit, you have a lot of hires here, which is impressive, but can you tell us a little bit about the process of hiring all these instructors, all these teachers?
Are we going to, yes, ma'am, I can do that, are we going to do that Friday or-
We can, but we, I-
I mean, I can do it now.
We can talk about that now.
I think the parents might want to know how you got the 17, two new staff members.
Yes, ma'am, we're very fortunate in Murfreesboro City Schools that we, I like to think that we hire the best, hire the best of the best. We did something this year that's totally new, I think we're the first school system in the state of Tennessee that have done this, we instituted virtual interviewing. We hired an individual who was studying abroad in Germany, we did a virtual interview with this individual, she was in Germany, we were here, a lot of the principals were impressed with the interview, we sent flowers out to every college in Tennessee, Sable and Mississippi, Alabama, the surrounding states, asked the education departments to pass this along to their senior, to soon-to-be graduates, they could go online, we asked them three questions, and they would film, videotape themselves answering those three questions, and then we would do follow-up interviews. We also conduct our onsite job fair in April, first, I think it was the first weekend in April, and then we, I mean, we're, we're very fortunate to get a lot of applications for our openings.
So did they, is it all through an application process, or do they meet the principals, or it's just through that interview?
All the above, they complete an online application, the principals interview them, they go through the instruction department, and a lot of times, we ask for a videotape of them teaching an actual lesson, or if school's in session, we ask them to teach a lesson, teach a fifth-grade math lesson over fractions.
And who, and I assume that you're the one that goes through the references?
No, ma'am, the principals do that.
So that, so if they had been in teaching positions before, they would call the prior schools?
Yes, ma'am, we contact the previous principal.
Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The assignment list that's located behind the personnel report, this is what we do each year, on the far right-hand side, you can see, let's say, take for Black Fox, for example, it talks about transfer from, it lists the names, they were transferred from, transferred to Black Fox, and then any individuals that left Black Fox at the end of the school year, and it gives this for every school in our system. I think the new hires are highlighted-
Yeah, they are.
...as well.
This document's fabulous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You said you hired six new coaches?
Yes, sir, well, they're, they're not new to the system, most of them were previous, are, were current teachers. I think we hired one academic coach, coach outside of the school system.
Oh, you're talking about academic coaches?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I'm sorry, yeah.
See, my brain went to athletics, I'm sorry.
I understand.
We're in the process of that now.
I thought maybe we were going to have an artery or something. We're going junior pro football.
You know? All right, Ms. Phillips?
Dr. Gilbert, this is purely philosophical, this, this posing I'm about to do-
Okay.
But we are actively seeking newly certified teachers from universities, and yet, we have such a, a respect for our very experienced teachers, and we know that they have a lot, they come with a lot of, you know, good knowledge, so are we doing anything?
I think what you're seeing is, and, and I'm glad the principal's here, because I'm going to see whether they nod or not, I think we're seeing more experienced teachers come into the system, I think that we're seeing a lot of teachers that are wanting to transfer from other systems come in, so that's extremely helpful. I think within the district, what we're trying to do is develop those leaders out of, out of some of those experienced teachers, and, and very interested in, and they're doing some training, for example, when we had our in-service, our two days of in-service, most of that was led by teachers, and so that's a good thing.
Well, it's always, you know, it's always a weight and balance, because the newer teachers cost less, as personnel's a big ticket item, and, but the experienced teachers have so much good knowledge.
I think the board, and I can't remember, four years ago, maybe, did away with the years of experience limit, and so I think that's really helped, and so we are seeing, I think, some more experienced teachers than what we were seeing come into the system, and that's, that's good.
Yes, it is, thank you.
And then I will speak to that in a minute, because I did meet a new teacher who is at Black Fox this year, Sunday afternoon, as he was pulling in to go back to work in his classroom for a while, and had a good conversation with him, and he has had a lot of experience, different places, not only on the elementary level, but the middle school and also some college, so I was, I was, I was glad to see somebody with the science background that he has, it was, had been hired to teach science.
And part of the personnel report, if I'm going to change the subject just a bit, two weeks ago, we talked about custodians and our openings of custodians, I'm pleased to report that we have about 16 to 17 hired custodians who are going through our process of background checks, et cetera, PAT tests, physical abilities test, and it is our goal by the end of this week to hire the other four or five custodians, get them in the pipeline.
Is that, excuse me, just one second, is that pretty inclusive in your email today?
Yes, the, the ones that he said, I had already subtracted for the hires, so, yes.
All right, Ms. Smith, I'm sorry.
No, I just, I think y'all, we talked a whole lot about the publicity to get the word out there that we had these openings, and, and I, I do want to thank the Daily News Journal, that great piece about that, but there are many other places that y'all posted, and, and I appreciate your effort getting the word out, because certainly want, we want to have clean campuses, but thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on personnel report? All right.
Attendance report, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, the attendance enrollment report, through the 11th day of school, we have 8,359 students, that's 296 over where we ended last year, and as you know, we do grow during the school year, so we expect that number to go up some more. Our people teacher ratio right now in K through three is 19.11, and for four through six is 21.34, our average is 19.9. We, you know, as, as I mentioned, we do expect that to go up some, things seem to have leveled off pretty well now, there is still some growth coming in to the district at Pittard, I don't know how Roseanne does that, but she keeps getting more and more children coming in, into Pittard, and so we feel, we feel very good right now where we are, there may be a tweak or two that Dr. Gilbert may be considering, but for the most part, the numbers have leveled off over the last three days.
Wouldn't we have overall a 3%, 4% increase unit-wise?
This, this right now?
Uh, let's see, I think it was four last week, last meeting.
Four, I was trying to figure that today.
3.67%.
Okay.
And I don't know if you remember, that the state's requirement is 2% growth to receive growth funds, so we obviously are very hopeful that we will continue this pace, and we do expect to grow some more as goes on. We have one other time of year that we do get a, an influx, and that's usually right after Labor Day, but interesting, last year, we grew a lot after the first of the year, from, from January on, which really helped us get that additional growth money last year that we really weren't anticipating.
Well, if I remember correctly, we grew about 30 students the last month of school.
Yes, yeah, we, we grew, over 50 students from January through May, and, and a little bit drops off at the end as they start to move out after, after the testing is done, but overall, we had, we had grown over 50 students.
Okay.
The attendance percentage, we don't have one yet, because the first 20 days of school are not up yet, so we do not have an official figure on that, that's why that number is blank.
Anyone have any questions about enrollment?
Ms. Remier?
I'm sorry, you may have explained this before, and maybe I just didn't catch it, on the pink boxes, when it says best, what is that? What is best?
That, that is students who are going through behavioral concerns that we, we work with them there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the attendance report? Anything else, other business coming for the board? Anybody?
I was going to ask about the janitors, but Mr. Ringstaff answered that.
Don't forget, Friday, 1 o'clock, we'll continue on Saturday morning at 9, if we need to. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, second?
Second.
Any opposition? Thank you, we are adjourned.